Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have roll call, please.
Councilmember Waller?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Collison?
Yes.
Newrge?
Yes, thank you. We're gonna change things up just a little bit tonight. We're gonna have citizen comments. And then we're gonna move after, if anyone wants to speak to us. Then we're gonna move the item A under City Manager Report, the Police Department memo, just above the insurance resolution. And then we'll continue on with the rest of the agenda. Okay. So, citizen comments. If anyone would like to speak to the council, now would be the appropriate time to do that. If you wanna speak to the council, approach the microphones, state your name and your address, and what you're speaking about. Okay, hearing none. We'll move, we'll continue on. That was your opportunity to speak. So, Morris Police Department memo.
So, about three weeks ago, I learned that we were gonna have police officers leaving the Police Department. And one of the things that I did is I immediately reached out to the sheriff and told the sheriff that it appears that we have a major problem in the Police Department and we are no longer gonna be able to staff a Police Department and be able to perform 24/7 services within the city of Morris. I then started reaching out and talking to officers and it was very clear to me that, and I do not plan on getting into any of the reasons why, but it was clear to me that police officers, police officers were gonna be leaving and we're gonna be short-staffed. And we know and understand in this environment that you're not gonna find new ones. All you have to do is turn on the news and you're gonna find out that police officers in Minnesota are shorthanded. There's not, not a lot of them going into the profession. And in some cases, the first resignation that came about, the individual is no longer gonna be in law enforcement. We then learned that we had a second officer that was a candidate for a final position in Alexandria. We actually learned today that that police officer put in the resignation. We also know and understand that we were short one already. We also know and understand that we have one police officer within our department that cannot perform the duties as a police officer. We have an eight-person Police Department with a chief as part of that number. And so, in the end, we're gonna be left in two weeks with four police officers. And so, what I'm telling you is that we're not gonna be able to reorganize Police Department, staff it, and continue to have one. It's just not gonna happen. It's not possible in this environment. So, what's the next step? The next step is something that we actually started looking at before. And that is, and what I'm suggesting here is that the City Council reestablished the Joint City-County Commission on Services. And we get together with them right away. I'm suggesting a meeting date on July 20th. I know Councilmember Waller's, Councilmember Salvi was on that commission before. I know and understand from the county perspective that they have individuals that are willing to be on that. And then we sit down, we take a look at, what is the next step? You know, my number-one goal in this whole thing is that we have to have somebody answering a 911 call. We are not gonna be able to do that.
The 911 call can be answered by the Sheriff's Department. They are, they are required by law to answer that call. The city does not have to do that. So, if we are in the position where we can't do it, the county has to step up and by law, has to answer that call. So, we do have some leeway there not to get...
Well, that's, that's why we have, that's why we have to sit down and talk.
But that, but they also need to follow, and the sheriff also needs to understand that that's what's gonna happen and he's gonna have to start staffing accordingly. Because we have been pulling that for them for a lot of years because we've had that. So, they, they need to be watching what they're doing according to what's happening to our department. Because they are the ones that are required by law to do it.
Now, I, I guess I'd like to just weigh in, Blaine. As you indicated, Brian and I were on the commission the last time we looked at that and we decided against it for a lot of different reasons. But I disagree with you, Blaine. I think there's some other options that are available to us as a city. I've lived in Morris my entire life. We've always had a police presence in this town. And as long as I'm sitting in this chair, there will be a police presence in Morris. Now, what I would support is possibly looking at things. We might have to do policing differently. Maybe we don't offer 24/7. Maybe we don't have aid. Maybe we look at reducing our force. Maybe some of the services we're currently providing will change. But my belief is the situation we're in today is temporary. You talked about nobody getting into this profession. And that has a lot to do with the current policies that are in place. Going across this country, the soft-on-crime approach has not worked well for this country. And it's not just in Morris, Minnesota. We're asking law enforcement people to do their job with one hand tied behind their back. And I don't, I sympathize with every one of them that are in that industry right now. They've got a tough job to do. But we, as City Council representatives and elected officials, we have an obligation to the citizens of Morris to provide a safe community. And I would argue that a lot of people have come to Morris to live because of that very reason. They feel safe and secure in our, in our community because of law enforcement. Now, in my opinion, is not the time for us to look at reducing and turning our backs on citizens of Morris. And I won't do it as long as I'm here.
Well, that's fine, but you have no choice. You have no choice in this. We do not have police officers that are gonna be able to be part of the Police Department. You have to understand that. You can't just magically snap your fingers and then have, you know, police officers come in here. And, and this isn't the end of it. There are other police officers that are, that are looking. So, you can sit here. I have to try to figure out what is gonna happen as far as covering the citizens of Morris. And so, what I'm telling you as a City Manager is the solution is we get together with the county, we sit down, we talk about it. We can look at what services do we wanna provide. But you cannot, with four people, you cannot run a schedule.
With the services that you're providing, I agree.
Right.
But we don't have to, Blaine. We can restructure that depart, it doesn't have to be an all-or-nothing thing.
Well, that's, we can sit down and we can talk about that. We can sit down and talk about what is it gonna look like moving forward. Because it's not cut and dry that the county just has to do everything that we want them to do. It is not cut and dry. And we need to have that discussion in the Joint City-County because...
It's not cut and dry.
Because, you know, and, and that's one of the things that we need to look at. The possibility of still providing the services that, that the people in this community are gonna wanna have. You know, and like I said, the number-one goal is to answer that call. We cannot run a 24-hour, a day, seven-day-a-week schedule. So, you're telling me right now that we get rid of that?
I'm not saying that's...
Well, then, we have to...
I'm not saying that's what we're gonna do. I'm saying that's an option.
But we have to right now, or we have to work with the county. We have to. Because we can't, we can't schedule right now.
On a short term, I agree with that. But, you know, if I'm understanding your recommendation, it's disbanding the Morris Police Department. And I don't like that. I don't like that.
I don't like it anymore. I grew up here.
Actually, the way I read the recommendation is to reestablish the City-County Joint Commission.
With, right.
And with that maybe being the major topic, there may be other topics. I agree with you that, and hopefully, that it is a temporary thing. We don't know that, we don't know that. But the thing is, is today, we're here today and we need to provide services to the community. And to do that, we have to expand, change the way we're doing business.
Well, I agree. We're gonna probably have to change the way we're doing police work. I understand that. I know that, I understand that very well. But I just don't want us to make a knee-jerk reaction to the current environment.
Well, I think that was, I think that was made when the officers decided to leave.
Well...
It, it really was. Because you have to understand that with them leaving, we don't have anybody left to be able to do this work. And we, we can get into a discussion about, you know, you know, what, what happened, but we have to do it in a different setting than this, than this. But, you know, it, you just have to understand that's where we're at in this moment in time. And, and like I said, I reached out to the sheriff immediately because he has to know and understand that when 911 gets a call, somebody's gonna have to be there to answer it. And then we sit down, we try to figure out, what is the next evolution of law enforcement gonna look like in the city of Morris? And that's what I'm telling you.
Well, I know we prob, I know you probably can't discuss why officers are leaving, but that is a concern of mine.
Right.
Why are they leaving? I mean, don't we, don't we deserve the right to figure out that? I mean, what is the root cause?
Okay, we have, we have basically two questions on this. One is basically making a motion to reestablish the City-County Joint Commission.
Did we ever disestablish it?
Probably not.
Well, we just stopped meeting, I think, is what happened.
Yeah, so, I mean, what we need to do is set a meeting date.
Right.
Correct? Would that, would you say that would be correct, Eric?
Yeah, I think you could just give indication to Blaine that you wanna have a meeting date.
Right.
It's not like it was disbanded or stuff.
Yeah. We disbanded it.
Yeah, we disbanded it. It's like the...
It would just stop being, yeah.
And I think we also need to have a work session amongst ourselves to figure out what we wanna do as a collective unit to, when these guys go forward or whoever our reps are to meet with the county. But we need to sit down and figure out what we're...
And that is a, that is the second, the second decision that we need to do. And that would be a closed-door meeting, not an open meeting. It would be just amongst the council. And after the meeting, I understand that we, we prepare a statement as to what...
So, what the mayor is saying, and what I said to the City Council is I'm the City Manager and the buck stops with me. So, anything beyond me to get into a discussion about personnel issues, whether it's with anybody underneath the City Manager, does not happen in an open meeting. It cannot happen in an open meeting. So, what they can do is they can sit down with me as a City Manager and hold me accountable for what happened with law enforcement. And we'll have that discussion. We'll record it. And then the results of that, any determination of what the City Council makes can be released. Because I'm telling you that this is a systemic problem that is happening not in just Morris. It's happening across the state. And, and you have to understand, you know, you can't just magically produce people. And again, none of this was brought to my attention until about three weeks ago. And so, and we cannot stop it. The ship has already left. We can't turn it back around. We can't retool it because it involves people. And people are not there in the market right now. And you just need to understand that. So, so let's, let's meet with the county. We can talk about, you know, what the options are. And then if you want, you can establish a meeting, meet with me and, and we can have that discussion about, you know, what happened with this entire situation and, and make that available to people.
Okay, Blaine, you had mentioned July 20th. That would be a recommended...
June, June 20th, or next Monday.
I wrote down, just...
Yep. So, then typically, I think we meet, I think we met in the afternoon, didn't we, like?
Yeah, we, it was like four or five or something.
Four, four or five o'clock. So, I'll, I'll reach out to Rebecca and then we'll sit down and we'll, we'll, we'll figure out a schedule and, and get, get everybody together.
It was with Commissioner Waller's and Commissioner Staples?
Staples.
Right. And you guys are both able to make that work? I should, it's the 20th, right?
June 20th? What time?
I'll double-check it. I don't have my...
5:15 or something.
Ah, yeah, we'll figure it out. It'll be like four or five o'clock.
So, I guess the que, do we even need a motion for that?
Ah, I don't, I don't think you do.
No.
I just, I think it's just important to understand that in the short term, in the short term, there has to be a change made so that we have people that are gonna answer calls. Because we had one officer that left today. It was the last day. That officer is no longer a police officer. We have another officer that gave a notice today that's gonna be gone in two weeks. And, and then from there, you know, we'll, we'll have that discussion in the joint, joint meeting about, you know, some of the potential options.
I just think it's really important that we do talk about the options. I mean, obviously, we got a large room of people here that are concerned about this. And I'm thinking probably the same concern that Kevin has expressed. But that, because Blaine, when I read this and I heard you, I heard what Kevin, like, we're done. It's over. And you're done, done. And I just think you can't portray that kind of thing 'cause that, kind of, that's scary.
It is scary. I'm scared for everybody.
But we don't have to sit, and, I mean, there are options. The, the short term is we convene, we look at what we have. 'Cause, yeah, you can't lose four people and expect that. But not to, not to press the panic button and think there'll never be another police officer that's gonna apply ever coming out of... No, and I know that, but that is what I hear. And so, I think we, while we need to be realistic, we also need to say, okay, let's...
This is the hardest thing I've done in my 32 years as a city administrator. Never in my dreams, and I'm getting ready, you know, I'm at the end of my career, never in my dreams have I ever imagined that I would learn that my Police Department is leaving me. Never in my dreams would I imagine that. You know, but the reality is, what do you do next? And, and we are in an environment where you, people, there are cities in Minnesota that advertise for police officers and they get no candidates. They get no candidates. There are departments short all around the state of Minnesota. And, and so, I'm just being real, I'm being realistic about it. And at the same time, you know, you were blindsided by this in a memo in a City Council packet, which I had a very difficult time dealing with that. And, but I had to do it that way because there was no opportunity to call a special meeting 'cause we had to get action started on this. And actually, as a City Manager, I do have the ability to get stuff started before I even get into a City Council meeting. And, and lucky for that, you know, we were able to reach out to the county and start looking at this. But no, no city the size of Morris should be, be without a Police Department. But if you can't find police officers, what do, what do you do? You know, and so, that's, that's the reality of the world that we're living in today in, in Morris and then actually in Minnesota and probably even across the country.
You know, Blaine, there, I, as, when I was reading your memo, I, I kind of sat back and, you know, asked myself the same thing. You know, how did we get here? How did we get to this spot? You know, as a city, I know we made some decisions within the last year or so to, well, and I wasn't totally in favor of it, but when we eliminated the Police Civil Service Commission, we, we eliminated that. And I, I, at the time, I thought that was a, there was a benefit to keeping that because, you know, they can assist you, the City Manager, with, with different things that are related to the policing of our, of our community. And, you know, you have a city to run. You have a lot of responsibility. And that commission, I thought, had value and merit. And we decided to eliminate that because I think at the time, we were told there was just an overlap between, you know, the union and whatever. So, there was a conflict in that regard. But I think that's something we should sit down and take a look at again. You know, if you remember how that worked, it was a three-body community member. It was Peg Rinkaburger, Dale Peterson, and I believe John Amison sat on that. And I think there is definitely a benefit. And I was looking at, you know, some examples of what other cities have enacted. And I'll just read for, you know, the mission statement from the Rochester Police Department or from the city of Rochester. They, one of the responsibilities that they have is monitoring and reviewing of police operation and evaluate the appropriate discipline and termination of officers. They actually review the performance of the police chief, you know. And we actually can set, you know, other things if we want them to assist in overseeing police operations. So, I think there's some merit in taking another look at it. It's kinda what I wanted to challenge this council with.
Are we looking at a work session pre, prior to the 20th?
I think we should.
That should be then, that we're, so the 20th is gonna be next Monday. So, we need to hit something this week?
Yep. What's everybody's schedule like?
We'll just make it open.
Thursday?
That's what kinda hit my mind after that.
Thursday, 5:15?
Yeah.
I can, I can do earlier too. I mean, it's not a problem for me to, I mean, I, the voice is next to me. What are you thinking?
Whatever.
I can do earlier too. I mean, two, three, four, what?
Um, probably four would be the earliest I can, you know.
Do you, do you wanna do it earlier?
Yes, guys, it's gonna...
I'm retired, so you just name the time there, there.
I'll be here too, so.
Then four, I mean, earlier than...
Should we do four, 4:15?
Four o'clock, Mr. Miller?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to have a work session for the council on Thursday, June 16th at 4:00 PM.
I'll set.
Here?
Yes, yeah, here at the chambers.
Sure. Do you wanna do here or the conference room at the City Hall?
Ah, we can, yeah, we can do it there.
You wanna do conference room?
Yep.
At the conference room of the City Hall.
Okay. Ah, so we're gonna have a work session at four o'clock on June 16th. That will be a closed-door work session with us five and the City Manager.
Well, and just to be clear, the purpose of that meeting, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is to look at the performance of the City Manager with regards...
With regards to the situation.
To the Police Department. You know, and nothing else. You know, and, and, and then afterwards, you, you can make a statement about what, what, what you've learned in that meeting.
That meeting will have to be closed. And you announce it at the beginning of the meeting that you're closing the meeting for employment review purposes. You cite the statute, which I don't have off the top of my head right here. But then you need to record that meeting so that if anybody wants to review it, when it becomes available, it's, it's recorded.
And we're capable of doing that over there, recording?
Ah, we should be, yeah. We should be able to do that. 'Cause we record here too.
Yeah. Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carried? Okay, so that, we will take that up on Thursday. So, back to our agenda. Joel is here. We're gonna talk about insurance.
Everyone's always favorite topic, I gather, that.
Yeah. Nobody wants to hear about insurance.
You folks are certainly welcome to stay. You don't have to. Just, I would only ask that as you leave, please keep it down a little bit, so.
Good evening, council members. It's always nice to see you. And I know it's always challenging times and a lot of different factors. And, I mean, most recently, when you think of insurance, you can't get too far from pretty significant claims nationwide and certainly hitting home here too. So, we'll talk a little bit about that. But I always like to give a state of the state in terms of insurance and what not only cities are dealing with, but what organizations are, different businesses locally and across the US. Because we continue to be in very challenging times when it, as it relates to insurance. And you look at from a macro basis, you know, what are some of those factors that everyone is going through? It's within the last few years and in the last decade, really. It's the most storms that we've ever had. The most unprecedented catastrophic, highest billion-dollar events, multiple, multiple ones. In, in addition to, you'll, you'll have litigation costs that, that continue to rise. More people, we're in a sue-happy environment that, that continues. And you look at inflationary pressures. We're at a level higher than we've ever seen in decades. Cost of construction is, is through the roof supply chain issues. Just means at the end, when things come to being paid, it just costs more. So, so that obviously translates into insurance. And insurance companies are paying more on the whole. They've had to respond by making rate increases. And, and that's a, a general statement with the exception, apart from work comp, of Minnesota cities and through the LEAKS program. It continues to be one of the strongest performing programs as it relates to insurance. And apart from work comp differences, what we'll talk about, you actually would've saw a premium decrease. And that's including coverage changes, increasing your building limits. And so, we'll talk about that. But again, directly attributable to the strength and management of the insurance program through, through Bremre and, and LEAK. So, we'll go through line by line and we'll certainly answer any questions as it goes through. And this will be provided in, in your board packet, but I can give you a highlight on my paper as well. When you're looking at your property coverages, each year, as they do every year, the LEAK contracts with a appraisal firm. And they specialize in appraising cities and city values across the nation, but specific to Minnesota as well. And they'll look at, what is the cost of construction doing? And what are appropriate replacement cost values that the city, city should have? And they apply then a percentage increase. So, there, there's a table here, but you'll see what your, your expiring coverage is going to and then what it's going from. Essentially, it's, it's roughly a 6.3% limit increase on your buildings and a 3.9% on your contents. And those specific percentage values that come directly from that appraisal firm. But even including those changes, and there's a, one other difference for it. Your property premium is down about 8,700 bucks. Again, in, in the industry at large, most people are seeing pretty significant property increases of premiums apart from cities. Another reason that the, the premium is down there a little bit is your cyber insurance used to be baked within, in the property line as far as the premium goes. They split it out so it has its own line now. It, it's essentially the same coverage. It's just showing there was a, a need to identify that, yes, the cities do have cyber coverage, so they made it its own premium line. But apart from that, your, your rate decrease on your property was about 9%. Equipment breakdown falls within that head bucket of your property coverage that just adjusted very minimally. And your liability was also down about 1,500. That's based on your exposures that we, we get from your renewal applications. But in general, positive performance from the city and, and the, the LEAK as a whole. Your liquor liability was down just slightly based on sales. Your fireworks liability is down and that's just confirming adequate controls with your contractor. Your crime bond is just up slightly. Your automobile, from 27 to 31, that's in part from some vehicle changes. And then your excess liability or umbrella, that also adjusted slightly up. But again, overall, those lines by themselves, it would be down about $900 over expiring. Where you're gonna see, your change in your premium is your, is your workers' compensation. And in part, because you had higher payroll than you did last year. And that's a basis of your premium is your payroll and your corresponding rates. The other thing that we saw, and it's really the only significant change from a claims perspective, it, it relates to public safety workers. And the LEAK has seen a dramatic increase in post-traumatic stress claims. They first became compensable in, in 2013. And that continues to, to rise. And, and most of those claims comes from police force. And so, that's about 30% of all the LEAK's claim cost is, is related to those claims. And so, they've identified that and really doubled down on, on resources as far as education, knowing that, yes, those are okay. Yes, it is a thing. Yes, there is help. And those are all, all available to, to the city. Apart from those, the, the work comp rates probably would've decreased roughly about 25%. So, overall context, back to the macro. The average rate increase in the US for, for businesses and organizations through last year and first quarter of this year was a little over 13%. So, that's what the average business and organization in the US sees. Your premium increase, including all exposure changes... Your premium increase, um, including all exposure changes was two point nine. So you look from thirteen to two point nine, uh, only because of work comp, so it it really shows the strength of your insurance program with the league and the city's management of claims. On the positive on the work comp, you'll see on on page two, your experience modification factor increased by a few points. You still have a couple of policy periods of of pretty significant claims being paid out. And your experience mod from the state is a three year snapshot of claims. So eighteen, nineteen, and twenty policy periods, the eighteen and nineteen were the two that had, uh, higher claims payment. So next year, one of those bigger ones will fall off. Last year and this year, significant improvements on your on your claims and what has been paid out. So you'll see those, the the benefits and and reduced premiums. If everything stays on track as far as your your claims performance. So overall, and I'm certainly happy to answer any questions, and and we thank you for the opportunity to serve the city and and for council's approval is a is a renewal total of, you'll see in the box, there are three seventy six eight five seven.
And we continue, Joel, correct me if I'm wrong, but we we made a decision a few years ago about the no deductible workers' comp.
Yes, thanks, as I as I closed, I forgot to mention that section. So yes, every year, we run a deductible analysis, and we look typically at a a five year period, uh, but we we did six as well this year to say, what is your claims experience been, and what is it average out versus the best premium choice? Because you can go zero to fifty thousand, and there's a credit structure all the way up to fifty thousand. Fifty thousand, you get the most reduction of premium, but you're banking on the side that you don't have a significant claim, because if you get two of them over fifty thou, you know, you you could be pretty easily hundred thousand additional cost. Based on those those two years of higher claims, your five year average still, um, is the no deductible choice. That that's been your cheapest premium option. So we review that every year, we look at claims as far as assistance of what can be done, and you know, a couple of those claims are kind of those shock loss type of ones that, you know, you have same scenario nine times out of ten, it probably won't happen. But so for for the time being, yes, the recommendation is to remain with no deductible.
Great, thank you. Any other questions of Joel? All right, thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Bring it back to the council for the resolution.
I'll move in that resolution, accepting the insurance renewal proposal.
I was, go ahead. You started.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion, the second, any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote, please.
Councilman Salvi?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Bellison?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Marys?
Yes. Thank you, thank you, Joel. Okay, moving on, we have no public hearings tonight, reading and approval of minutes from our May twenty fourth regular meeting.
I'll move approval of the regular minutes from the May twenty fourth meeting.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And we have the same, uh, May twenty fourth condensed version for the paper.
I will move approval of the condensed minutes.
I'll second that, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. We have the consent agenda consisting of the audit of city bills, application for exempt permit from assumption, uh, gambling reports from the Legion, and the transit report. And I will move approval of the items on the consent agenda.
I will second.
Any discussion or questions on any of the items?
Item four, welding supplies are, what are we building? It's like eight grand worth of welding supplies, is that something to do with the playground sets that we're putting up, or?
Uh, no. I'd have to go back and check, but I I know, uh, I think one of the things Brad was gonna do was, uh, do some work building a trailer for, uh, the new generator that we're gonna that we got from the D N R.
And it's actually water treatment plant chemicals is what it is.
Oh, that's it.
Yeah, the bulk of that is water treatment plant.
Seventy seven forty five. Oh, okay, yeah, it's the vendor name, American Welding Supplies, okay, then.
Yeah.
W T P Chemicals.
And that's why Whitney's here.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Whitney.
Read a little further maybe next time, huh?
Any any other concerns or questions on the consent agenda? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. We have petitions and requests and communications, we have an acceptance of some donations. Get to it here, we have one, we have, uh, twenty five dollar from the, uh, local V F W auxiliary in memory of their departed, uh, V F W auxiliary members. They're not asking for specifics, like, we want this tree and we want to put it here or anything like that. They just want it as part of our program. So I'm sure the tree board will appreciate that. And I think we should do that one first.
I will move to accept the donation from the V F W auxiliary to the tree board for the amount of twenty five dollars.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. And we have a dis, uh, a donation from S C M C Stevens Community Medical Center to the Morris Fire Department in the amount of five hundred dollars. Again, I don't believe there's any requests for that to do with that money.
I'll move approval, accepting the donation from Stevens Community Medical Center, uh, for the fire department in the amount of five hundred dollars.
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Carried. Okay, item B, uh, put Tourism Board Prairie Harvest Fest tentative schedule.
Well, and then I think there's a memo in there, correct? Did you get the memo? Memo on, uh, the recommendation from the tourism board to, uh, uh, use lodging tax money for the Prairie Harvest Fest in, uh, twenty three hundred seventy seven dollars for various games, we've done this in the past for a community event, and then five thousand dollars, uh, for a fireworks show. So we're looking for a motion to approve that.
And I think it's important to to point out, in case anybody is questioning, um, this is not a Heartland Motors festival, it is a community event, um, that, uh, much of the community is getting behind and and doing it, so that's that's why the city is okay to get involved.
They just took over the organization of it, is what they did.
Yes.
You know, and it's all gonna be out at the fairgrounds pretty much, and and then all the other organizations are doing all the things that they normally did that same time.
I'll move approval of the, uh, tentative schedule for the Prairie Harvest Fest and the city amount of money for the fireworks and the, uh, games.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Orders and resolutions, I have a few of them. We have a res- resolution.
So Nick should be a.
Yeah, okay, we don't. That's that's not in our.
Uh, it's on, it was on.
Electronic.
It's on the table.
It's on the paper, yeah, okay, all right.
Yep, so he's got the sale, sale day report and the resolution.
Welcome.
Hello, Mayor, council members, Nick Anhut with Ellers and Associates. I'm here to discuss the results of a bond sale that was held on behalf of the city, financing to be put in place for this year's street and utility improvement projects, as well as reimbursing some costs related to the street sweeper that was purchased earlier this year. Uh, the bonds in total were gonna be offered at, you know, two point two million dollars to fund about two million of this year's projects and two hundred thousand for the street sweeper. Uh, the primary source of repayment would be tax levy, as well as assessments coming from the benefiting property owners of the improvement projects, and the utilities contributing, uh, their share of the overall cost. Um, I'm happy to say that we did have a discussion with Moody's Investor Service, and they did affirm the city's bond rating, uh, A one rating, which is a good news, so affirmation that things are going well financially for the city. Moody's did have a discussion with Blaine, myself, Whitney, and just discussed kind of where things are at economically here at the city, some growth potential, um, as well as, uh, your balanced operations within your general fund and overall financial picture, uh, and reserve levels. And they thought that things were looking good, um, I'd say that they admittedly, it's been about five years since they evaluated the city, so we had to kind of brush them up, but they, uh, uh, certainly were more positive, uh, in this latest report, so there is a attachment within that, um, that kind of discusses briefly their findings, uh, and I just suggest that, you know, in your in your off time, when you're not too busy, maybe take a look at that report, and it gives you some impression of some of the positives that, uh, an independent evaluator kind of looks at the city. But with all that said, that bond rating helps us go out to the market so that we can obtain lower interest rates, uh, for the city. And we did receive three bids to purchase the bonds of the city, a low bid from Northland Securities in Minneapolis, uh, came in at a three point six five percent true interest cost, that's the total interest applied against, uh, both the street and equipment portion, all lumped together. And, uh, a cover bid from Baker Group, uh, was at three point seven seven, and then the high bid came from Baird out of Milwaukee at three point eight two percent. You know, these these rates are, uh, a little bit elevated from where we saw things the last couple of years. I know we did a refinancing not too long ago, maybe two years. We get, we're able to access much lower rates during the, uh, the pandemic. Um, the Federal Reserve has taken some steps to kind of raise those to try to curb inflation. I I know we just talked about that in the insurance discussion, um, more of the same. But, uh, these are very competitive, uh, bids. Certainly just yesterday was a very volatile time in the marketplace, and these, uh, came out much better than some of the financings we observed just yesterday, so I'm I'm pleased that things settled down a little bit. And this this rate from, uh, Northland is very competitive. I should also mention that Dakota Bank here in Mor- Morris participated with Northland Securities, so they're not buying the entire, but they're partici- they're forming a syndicate, a group of different, uh, banks and underwriters pooling their money to to purchase these bonds, and then and then they'll split them up. So you do have some local participation here, uh, from the community. With that said, the final sizing of the bonds will be two point two four million dollars, so there was a resolution prepared. A updated physical copy, uh, was given, uh, from your bond attorney, uh, with the results from the Northland Securities bid, uh, but that final amount will be two point two four million dollars, uh, two hundred of which will go towards the street sweeper, and then the two million forty thousand going towards this year's, uh, street projects. Everything appears, uh, well and in place when we look at the financial impact of this. The equipment part is gonna be repaid, uh, from a nine year tax levy, um, about twenty seven thousand dollars per year in debt service cost. The, if we apply the the rate, uh, to that, it represents about a three point three three percent interest rate or cost on financing that equipment. And then the remainder of the improvement portion, that's actually gonna be a little bit longer, restructuring that for a fifteen year repayment, um, with about a seventy three thousand dollar levy impact, so, um, the total debt service will be a hundred and ninety thousand dollars per year, but assessments will pay a portion, utilities repay a portion, and then the, uh, the balance from the levy, about seventy three thousand dollars, that'll be included in your future budgets. So that'll be, um, for impacting next year's levy, uh, for your adoption later this year. Other than that, I'd be happy to address any questions from the council, but, um, did have a a good resolve of the sale. It's good to see that we had three bids, uh, competitive bidding, and we certainly would recommend moving ahead with the low bid from Northland Securities to lock in this financing so you can complete, uh, your projects and and maintain your, uh, reserve levels at the city.
A little bit off from the two percent we had, uh, I think the last time we did a, you know, a big project like this.
Yeah, I'd say that, um, not too far off from the historical norm. When we look back about ten years at where where, I'll say maybe a twenty year interest rate would be about four percent. But certainly, when we look back the last two, three years, yeah, it's 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 come up quite a bit, and it's been progressing since January. And that's that's kind of the state of the global, uh, economy, uh, as you will.
It is whatever it is.
Uh, I should add that the, you will have the opportunity to prepay, uh, on these bonds, uh, in the future, so they they do have a call provision, gives the city some flexibility. If you wanted to refinance them in the future, uh, if rates do come back down at a lower level, uh, you would be able to start doing that in about nine years, um, you'd be able to prepay without any kind of penalty, uh, or any any call, uh, premium.
Okay, great. What's your crystal ball say about what's gonna happen in the future? It's pretty cloudy.
Well, we expect some news from the Federal Reserve tomorrow, um, that they're going to continue to to ratchet up rates to try to curb inflation, so they they try to raise interest rates to slow things down and potentially bring prices back down, um, alongside that. Most of the forecasts think that that's gonna happen multiple times this year, so it's not just gonna be tomorrow, but it'll be, uh, happening maybe one or two more times throughout the course of the year. So we we think, uh, rates will be on the climb at least this year and next. And then see how that actually works with inflation, whether or not that's gonna persist in the future.
Right.
What did you say that time period was when we refinanced?
It's a few year, a few, uh, years down the road.
Did you say nine years?
Nine years, yeah.
So we were stuck with that for nine years.
Well.
Kind of.
You've got some other bonds that we could potentially, uh, exercise options on, uh, so there there are some other opportunities that we'll definitely take a look at.
Okay, any, uh, any questions for for Nick?
No, thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks for coming in here.
Yeah.
Appreciate, good to see you.
Thank you. Um, I'll make a motion, uh, accepting the resolution approving the sale of the two point two eight.
Four.
Four, bond series two zero two two eight.
I will second that.
Any discussion? It's expensive, but it's something that we have to keep going, this is the, um, this. We're gonna do that project, right?
Right.
We can't stop that project.
Right.
So that 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 is done, so we're gonna do it, we're gonna pay for it with this.
Right.
This bond issue. We'll have roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Bellison?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Marys?
Yes. We have resolution authorizing a fund transfer and closing of a fund.
He's just gonna, hey, Nick, do we have documents that you want signed? You wanna hang on, you wanna do it? All right.
Okay. So we're gonna close the master, airport master plan project.
Yep. Yeah, so originally, when we did that, we took money from the liquor store to help pay for that. So this is the remaining balance in there, and we'll just put it back in the liquor store.
Oh, for the master plan, okay.
For the master plan, that was, yeah, it was a s- small, that that's that's good for like twenty five years, so we wound up having to pay for that ourselves.
Okay, I will move approval on the resolution authorizing that fund transfer and the closing of that fund.
I'll second.
Any discussion? We'll have roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bellison?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
We have a resolution approving a Westmore quote to replace the airport gasoline tank system.
Yeah, so I think we talked about this a little bit before. The 100 low lead gas tank is, keeps moving up and down. Actually, if you go out there now, the pump area is like tipped and moves up and down and stuff. And one of, one of the things that we looked at was if we do a state grant on that, it's gonna require that we follow all the rules and regulations and everything that goes with the state grant for bids. And the engineer's estimate on that project right now is about $400,000 with a local share of about $120,000. And quite frankly, I think Benson just got done doing one. And actually, I talked to Aaron about finding a second quote because we're, it's unique that we have a company right in town that does this. And so I actually am talking to a company that is gonna possibly give us a second quote on this. Not many companies do this kind of work with these tanks and Westmore actually, through Superior and their subsidiaries, have a ability to do it. So I'm recommending that rather than go get a state grant and pay the same amount of money or more, that we just go to a local company and get this done. The airport's closed. This includes taking out the old tank, putting, you know, fixing everything up, putting up the new tank. And then my recommendation is we use the American Rescue Plan money. You know, we've got about $250,000 that's available in there. Use that and then we're done with the airport. But I would say, you know, if you want to do this resolution, do it contingent upon me getting a second quote and then I'll look at it. And I can't imagine that the second quote's gonna be less than this one. But if that happens, then I'll bring it back and take a look at it with the city council. But then we're done. I mean, pretty much everything's gonna be done out there by the end of the year. They thought it'd be like six to eight weeks to get a tank. And then I talked to Jerry Henshaw about taking the fuel out of the current one because we bought it really cheap and it's 100 low lead and it doesn't really go bad, you know, so we want to make sure we save that. But the spring, we got water in the tank and they had to pump out the water. So that's my recommendation is that we go ahead and do that.
And the old system is an underground system and this one is an above ground?
Yeah, so it's an underground tank that's got an above ground pump. And then actually that pump's tied into a card reader that is over by the jet fuel system. So you swipe your card and then it activates the pump by this underground tank. And so then the pump's gonna be the same and everything. It's just that we're gonna take the tank out of the ground and put it above ground.
Good idea. Water and aviation fuel is not a good mix.
Yeah, it's not. Pilots don't like that.
When you have problems.
You do passengers pull over and fix it, yes.
I think we're very fortunate to have a tank company right here in Morris.
Very.
I think that's cool. Would be a lot more if it was, we were dealing with somebody in another state.
Well, the one company I phoned, they actually, I think it was Mankato rejected a bid three times because the first one came in 75% over the engineer's estimate. That was the engineer's estimate. And, you know, it's just crazy.
Okay, so we have the resolution approving the Westmore contingent on getting a second quote.
I'll move on that resolution.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote on the resolution, please.
Councilmember Waller?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bellakson?
Yes.
Marys?
Yes. And we have a resolution approving an agreement with Mike Seahawk for public access channel system management.
And this is basically the same agreement we had before. We're just renewing it for a year. I did have a chance to trade a couple of emails with Mike. We know and understand that there's one less TV company here, but, because Federated got out of that business. But the initial investment in the equipment to be able to put this public access information on the system is done with. We don't have to worry about that. And quite frankly, most of the work that Mike does, doesn't matter if there's one or two. It's no more work. If there's, there's, there's two of them. And he's been adding additional programming. So it's not just the normal stuff. So they're putting high school sports on and all kinds of stuff.
Oh, that's awesome.
So I'm recommending we just renew it.
I'll move on that resolution approving the agreement with Mike Seahawk for public access channel system management.
I will second.
Any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote on the resolution, please.
Councilmember Bellakson?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Bellakson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Marys?
Yes. We have a resolution approving an IT services agreement with Lakes.
Lakes Country Service Cooperative. They do a fabulous job and quite frankly, Whitney and I get really nervous about computer stuff in this day and age. We've been able to upgrade some server things to protect our data and there's a couple other things that we're working on that we'll probably present to you. But basically, this is just a renewal and it's 3% a year. And, you know, they do a very good job of responding to what we need from them. And we're part of the Lakes Country Service Cooperative and we've used them before for other things, so.
Is that just a flat fee then? Or do they, I mean, that's a fee and then they charge by the hour?
Yeah, it's just a flat fee and then we call them and they come and they.
Well, it's pretty inexpensive.
And some of the stuff that you can do right online, you know, they actually will just, you turn on your computer and they'll be able to go on and, you know, get into it and look at it. And we've, we've updated some computers recently.
It's pretty inexpensive, to be honest, for IT services that you don't have to be extra. So I'll move on that resolution approving an IT services agreement with Lakes Country Services Co-op for 2023 to 2025.
I will second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Everybody's iPad working okay?
So far.
So far?
Working better once we renew.
Couple years?
Yeah.
Had these a couple years?
Yeah.
I'd say more than that.
Probably.
We, before COVID.
Well, that Grant, the IT guy, he's not around anymore, is he?
Right.
Grant, wasn't he the original IT guy?
I don't know, you guys got it written on your boxes still?
I do.
Might want to ask him if there's anything we should do with these things, you know, just to make sure that we keep them going.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? Sorry to get this sidetracked. We will have roll call vote for the resolution, please.
Councilmember Salvi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Bellakson?
Yes.
Marys?
Yes. Okay, there's some information Blaine provided us on ADA requirements. We don't need to take any actions. Everybody want to talk about it?
No, thank you for doing that, Blaine. I know it was probably a lot of work on your end, but.
Well, there's a few things that we have to do, so we'll be getting at that.
All right, and city manager's newsletter.
I'll just throw it out for any questions you might have. Because we have to go tour parks, sign some documents in tour parks.
Oh, I got a question regarding the spray park because I've seen it a couple times. When that is down, is that posted somewhere?
Uh, no, but we could.
Can we do that, please? Because that would save a lot of people's, okay, I'm exaggerating a lot, but there are several people.
No, we do get.
Yeah, you get the calls.
We get contacts from people that want to know, including nieces.
Yeah, well, yeah.
They want to know if they're gonna be able to go out there. But that is a very popular thing.
Yes, it is.
Busy today.
It's gonna be busy, so, yeah. And the new playground equipment, can you take a picture and put that on Facebook?
Sure, yeah.
That looks fantastic. I don't know.
Yeah, there's one more piece, one more piece that has to come in for that. And then, yeah.
It looks really cool.
Yeah, it turned out really good.
Are all the bathrooms open in all the parks?
I think, as far as I know, they are.
Why was the one closed down?
Uh, because the, the people coming in to fix the damage, so we closed it while they came in to fix the damage. But then I think, I don't know, we were supposed to bring some porta potties over.
There was some. I know on each side there was.
So if they're gone, then they must have fixed it up.
Oh, they were there that long?
Well, we'll find out when we go around today and just.
Oh, yeah, right, okay.
Russ, Russell, no.
I'll go.
Okay, anything else on the city manager's newsletter? Anything, any other business that needs to come before the council? We have a parks tour after, afterwards.
Yeah, so hopefully there's a bunch of people waiting outside.
They're still here, hopefully.
Send a reminder just Thursday morning, please, just for our meeting, just as a, just to remind everybody it's only a couple days away, but.
And please send it actually to everybody's personal emails.
Cell phone or cell phone.
Send us a text or something.
Text would be better.
Text would be great.
If that's possible.
Do we do that?
Uh, I think, I think we can.
I think so. That, yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
We're not having a chat. We're just giving you.
Notice.
Write it on your forehead.
Okay, anything else? Getting adjourned.